And I would just like to welcome everybody here and thanks for coming out. If I could have June Hugby come up to the front, that would be great. Right to the stage.
Oh geez.
Okay, I will.
Put your own spot. You're gonna come right up here, sure. Tonight we would, we are honoring June Hugby for her volunteerism in the town of Scoween. And we've kind of shortened the list because it is a long list of stuff that she has done. And we do appreciate doing this we have done. And I'm just gonna read a few things here. She's a teacher for 37 years. Part of Delta Kappa Gamma chapter. She was a Maine Entire Teachers Association. Somerset Scouting Women's Club since 2003. St. Denary United Methodist Church for 22 years. Detective in Benetton Land Order of the Outlaws 2531. Caribou High School, Danak Theater, Lakewood Theater, Waterville Opera House. Helped take care of her stepmother and her sister with health issues and adopted her six-year-old nephew. Cubs Health Theater. Treasurer for the United Baptist Church. Took a friend to her home for recuperation after surgery. Gets friend rides to doctor's appointments. Part of the Bloomfield Garden Club. And Volunteer of the Year, a Mid-Currier Award presented by Scouting Women's Club. That's just a few things and it's a long list. And the board wanted to give you this.
I'm sorry, long list?
That's why I didn't read it all.
Hi, I'm here also because I'm shorter than Paul. No, that's not why I'm here. The sound, so you can hear me. I have something from the State Senate and the House of Representatives. Be it known to all that we members of the Senate and the House of Representatives join in recognizing June Nickerson Hugby of Scoween, who has received the Spirit of America Foundation Award. The Spirit of America Foundation was established to encourage and promote volunteerism. And the foundation presents awards to honor local individuals, organizations, or projects in appreciation of community service. We send our congratulations to Mrs. Hugby on her receiving this award. And be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 128th legislature and the people of the state of Maine. Thank you. So, thank you June Hugby and anybody else that volunteers, we need volunteers.
And if everybody was standing, say the pledge of allegiance.
Now we will call the meeting to order. To Joel Cummings, Constable of the town of Scoween, Maine, in the county of Somerset. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the voters of the town of Scoween in said county and state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet in the opera house in the Scoween Municipal Building in said town on Monday, the 12th day of June, A.D. 2017, at 7:00 in the evening to transact all business as herein enumerated in the articles of the town warrant. And to notify and warn said voters to meet in the council room in the Scoween Municipal Building in said town on Tuesday, the 13th day of June, A.D. 2017, then and there to act upon Article 2 by secret ballot as set out below. The polling hours therefore to be from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Can I please have a nomination?
Second.
I now would like to ask for nominations to have a, to cease.
I move nomination cease.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any more nominations? They cease, sorry. So we have the name of Ken Lexier. I am now going to go around to the four individuals to cast ballots, I will collect those. Ken, can you please report?
I, Ken Lexier.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
End of this state.
End of this state.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
As a citizen there.
As a citizen there.
So don't think I'm.
So don't think I'm.
I state my. Do swear that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties.
The duties.
We come upon him as moderator.
We come upon him as moderator.
Of this meeting.
Of this meeting.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So don't think I'm.
So don't think I'm.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much for coming tonight. The first order of business, would someone please make a motion to allow town officials who are residing outside of Scoween to address the town meeting?
So, second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. We also need to have a motion to postpone Article 2 until the election tomorrow, which the time for that is 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So would someone please make a motion to? Thank you.
Second.
There's a second? Okay, there's a motion and second to adjourn action on Article 2 until after the election tomorrow. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Who made, who made the motion? Right there.
First to nail it.
Thank you. And who made the second?
Chief Smolger.
Thank you. Okay, just very briefly, some rules. We have to have rules. These articles, the money articles, are what are called cap articles, which means that they can only be approved in amount equal to or less than the amount that's mentioned in the article. The second thing I want to say is that the best way to move this along, and without restraining any of your rights for discussion or to amend, is after I read the article, if someone can make a motion to approve the article as written and then someone seconds that, it will get the article on the floor. You can ask questions, you can state your opinions, and you can amend the motion if you so choose. I will not accept any negative motions, they're too confusing. Any motion to amend, we will only deal with one motion at a time. And I'm sure, because we're all very nice people here tonight, that everybody will be respectful and courteous. So having said all that, we'll begin with Article 3 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,447,447 for general government.
Move as read.
Move as written.
Move as written.
Thank you, that would be better in case I make this reading. So if there's a motion to accept the article as written.
Second.
And it's second. Are there any questions or discussions? Anything anybody wants to know? Or anything anybody wants to say about Article 2? Yes, Mr. Burnham?
Three, he said two.
I'm sorry, three, thank you. There being none, all those in favor of Article 3 as written, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,387,715 for police department.
Moderator?
Yes.
I remove, I move to accept Article 3 as written.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept Article 4 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $872,457 for fire department.
Mr. Moderator, I move we accept Article 5 as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And who seconded?
Matt Wood.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments regarding Article 5? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $572,604 for other protection.
Moved as read.
Second.
Okay.
Written.
Moved as written, thank you. I would prefer that you say written.
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. It's been moved in second to approve Article 6 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $118,513 for health and human services.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 7 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $577,494 for wastewater and pollution control.
Moved as written.
I move we accept Article 8 as written.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve Article 8 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $825,085 for solid waste management.
Moderator, I move we accept Article 9.
Moved in second to accept Article 9 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $437,915 for public works, summer roads maintenance.
Moderator, I move, I move we accept Article 9 as, out of the text, speaking as written.
Second.
Moved in second to accept Article 10 as written. Any questions or comments? All those.
Who was the second?
Jean?
Yes.
Any, there aren't any questions or comments, so we'll vote on Article 10. If you're in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $613,450 for public works, winter roads maintenance.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 11 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $232,000 for public works, vehicle maintenance.
Moved as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 12 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $84,849 for the care of cemeteries.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 13 as written. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $463,425 for parks and recreation.
Moderator, I move we accept Article 14 as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 14 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1667,944 for capital expenditures, debt, retirement.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 15 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $101,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for the pollution control plant.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 16 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for the recreation department.
Moderator, I move we accept Article 17.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 17 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $37,500 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for the municipal building.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 18 as written. Are there any questions or comments? Who seconded that?
Earl White.
Thank you.
That's for the air conditioner?
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for the solid waste department.
Moderator, in favor, will action on Article 18 as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 19 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,400 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for the police department.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second, moved in second to approve Article 20 as written. Any questions or comments? Yes, John? No?
I don't.
What, you ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $190,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for public works equipment.
Move as written.
Second.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion? Oh, thank you, Mr. Black. And the second? One, okay. It's been moved in second to approve Article 21 as written. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, on page 59 of our budget, there's one.
There's, there's a microphone coming your way.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, on page 59 of our budget, it's showing a question of 175, and I just wondered what the instructions are.
If you can hear me? When we were going through the process.
Great, there's a microphone coming your way. Turn it on. Do you need, do you need help?
Hello? What happened between the two bucks is that I got some quotes from three of the truck dealers, and none of them were interested in taking the truck that I had in trade, so that changed that figure.
We're on Article 21. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for public works, roads, and sidewalks.
Moderator, I move we accept Article 10, the third as written.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
That's okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Article 22 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to accept and carry forward in a separate account sums that may be received from the State Department of Transportation, local road assistance program estimated at $141,984.
Move as written.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Article 23 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend the amounts voted in Articles 22 and 23 from the capital improvement program, Public Works Roads and Sidewalk Account for the town share of the following proposed projects. Shim and Overlay Union Street, Dartmouth Street, Dennis Street, and Jones Street. South Factory Street and Spring Street will get a two-inch mill and overlay. Ruleable roads will be the final mile of the back road, one-and-a-half-inch surface coat and two-and-a-half-inch overlay on Swain Hill Road.
Move as written. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Article 24 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $224,500 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for the fire department.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 25 as written. Who made the motion?
Chief Smolger.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve Article 25 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for emergency management.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 26 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserves, funds for administration.
Move as written.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Article 27 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for economic and community development.
Sir Moderator, I move, critical action on Article 28. Moderator.
As written?
As written.
Is there a second?
I'll start it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds for cemeteries.
So moved? As written?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Article 29 as written. Are there any questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds, for the planning department.
Motion to approve is written. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 30 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for capital expenditures, capital reserve funds, for public works buildings. Move is written?
Second.
Movement seconded to approve Article 31 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $107,775 for Skowhegan Free Public Library. The community service organization's request by petition is $107,775. Mr. Shea.
I'm favorable action on Article 32 as written.
Second.
Movement seconded to approve Article 32 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for Co-Hearn Park Commission.
Move is written?
Thank you. And a second? Seconded by Mr. Shea. The article has been moved and, I'm sorry, a favorable motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. Motion carries. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 for Skowhegan History House. Mr. Burnham, do you want to make that motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 34 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,000 for Main Street Skowhegan.
Make a motion to approve is written, second.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 35 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $23,000 for Chamber of Commerce. Move is written?
Second.
The second? And the second was made by? Who?
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 36 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 for KB Cap Transportation Services.
Moderator, I'm favorable action on Article 37 as written.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 37 as written. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 for KB, KB Cap Child Development Program.
Moderator, I'm favorable action on Article 38 as written.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 38 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,000 for family violence.
Move the article as written? Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 39 as written. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for Kennebec Behavioral Health.
Moderator, I'm, we accept Article 41 as written.
Forty or?
Forty.
Forty, thank you. And is there a second? Second? Our, there's, a, a motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 40 as written. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Can you just explain why you guys hit zero on that? The selectmen have voted zero.
Okay. So does someone receive that, either the budget committee or from the select persons?
Um, I believe, uh, we suspended new funding requests. Um, looking at my notes here, that they had all the petitions. And, um, and I, I believe also in their literature, um, the majority of their service, services was outside of the town of Skowhegan. Um, and our fear is in five or 10 years, we have a list of 30, 40 of these organizations requesting funds. They, they all deserve it, but we have limited funds to fund every nonprofit, every agency in the state.
Yes, ma'am. Could you, could you, do you have a microphone for this young lady? We, we are recording this, ma'am. Would we help if you spoke into the microphone? Thank you.
But this agency is not just out of Skowhegan. They, they do a lot in this town, and in the schools in this town, and I know it. So I think this should be really funded.
Okay. Does anybody else want to make any comments or ask any questions about Article 40? There's a motion on the floor to raise and expend $2,500.
Is that why the selectmen say reasons, or do you mean they should answer too?
Does someone from the selectmen want to answer that?
Last year, they did not get any money, so we were looking at all of these, um, going down through, um, because everyone's finally getting new ones, pop up or whatever. So, um, at some point, I've tried to, if they follow what we passed that we do, then that obviously were, goes on. They did not get any last year, so the codes were going with the zero.
Um, Devita?
These people had to sign, get petitions signed by, I can't remember the number, 355 citizens of Skowhegan, and that shows support for this organization in this town.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will, uh, there is a motion to accept Article 40 as written. So we're ready to go. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The motion carries. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,766 for Spectrum, Spectrum Generations.
Move is written?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 41 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The motion carries. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for hospice volunteers of Somerset County.
Moderator, I move we accept Article 42 as written.
Moved and seconded to accept Article 42 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,006.50 for sexual assault crisis and support. Move is written?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 43 as written. Uh, any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Here comes a microphone.
Richard report. Um, I just, this article and previous article about family violence looked like a crazy plan for the organization to prevent you do, to do this stuff. And we just say to prevent family violence, to prevent, uh, what's this one here for? Sexual assault, crisis, and support? At least it sounds like a crack support. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 43 as written? Please raise your hands. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for a Skowhegan community food cupboard.
Mr. Moderator, I'm open to we accept Article 44 as written.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 44 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 45, to see if the town will vote to apply fiscal year 2018 operational revenues in the amount of $2,097,359 to offset the fiscal year 2018 appropriations.
Moderator, I move, I move we accept Article 45 as written.
Moved and seconded to approve Article 45 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. Article 46, to see if the town will vote to appropriate an amount from undes, undesignated fund balance, not to exceed $750,000 in total, towards one or the following purposes: to reduce the tax commitment, to appropriate funds to the public works, roads, and sidewalks reserve account, to establish pursuant to 38 MRS A 5801, and appropriate funds to a new public safety building reserve account, and/or to appropriate funds to the parks and recreation reserve account, ball field, compound designation. So if someone is inclined to make a motion, um, your motion needs to include how the undesigned fund balance not to exceed $750,000 will be used by your selectmen.
I'll make a motion to accept the article as written. Can I bring A?
Okay. So your motion is to, uh, use the undesigned fund balance not to exceed $750,000 to reduce the tax commitment. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it's been moved and seconded to approve for Article 46, to the extent that not more than $750,000 will be used to reduce the tax commitment. Any questions or comments?
I have questions.
We'll get right to you, ma'am. One second. Go ahead.
Hello. Um, so I just wanted to cover that this year, the board of selectmen and the budget committee wanted to provide different options. I know that for more than the last 10 years, uh, we have utilized, uh, the undesigned fund balance, or also term surplus to lower taxation. And so this year, when looking at our infrastructure needs, the board of selectmen and budget committee want to provide those other options, which are listed in the parentheses right below, uh, those options. So the selectmen are recommending $500,000 to reduce the tax commitment, $150,000 for roads and sidewalks, and $100,000 for public safety building. And then the budget committee is recommending $200,000 to go towards roads and sidewalks, $500,000 for public safety building, and $50,000 for the ball field. That is all covered in the last page of the budget book, if you happen to grab one of those on the way in. Uh, if you have any question, I'm sure we'd be glad to cover that.
In the back there, ma'am?
Yes. Uh, um, can you tell me what $750,000 actually means to each taxpayer here? I mean, what is that? How many dollars? Am I, am I saving on my taxes by using that money?
Um, just to give you a comparison, uh, last year, we utilized $750,000 to lower taxation, and then we also had an additional $200,000 that we were able to pull out of the assessing reserve account that we had set aside for, um, the SAPI litigation, in order to lower taxation for the last tax bill that came out. Um, in, uh, in the impact to the mill rate, it's going to be really hard to give you what the impact to the mill rate might be for this coming year because of the revaluation that we are currently working on, that will impact the bills that are coming out this year. But if we were looking at an apples-to-apples comparison of the current mill rate, um, the $750,000 would be approximately three-quarters of a mill. I hope that I'm answering your question.
Which is?
Seventy-five cents per thousand dollars of valuation.
Seventy-five cents per thousand dollars?
Valuation, yes.
So we're going to take $750,000 out to pay that for three-quarters of our?
Well, I don't think anybody can give you an exact number, but I think it's pretty clear that if you're, if you're, if you're being taxed for less than, for $750,000 less, that it's literally going to lower your, your tax bill.
Ten, ten dollars, hundred dollars, hundred dollars? We don't know because, but I'm just saying, I think we're taking that money out for something that's going to be a very municipal, very small amount.
Yeah. So if you have a hundred thousand, if your house is valued at a hundred thousand dollars, it would save you seventy-five dollars on your tax bill. Approximately, yes. Go ahead.
Uh, we want to give several options this year because we plan on laying it spring, uh, and sometimes forty people, sometimes a hundred on a big year, approve this budget. Um, and as you can see, all of these articles fly right through, um, after tons of work. So we wanted to make it very clear, uh, and give you two, now three different options of how to spend this. The budget committee's take this year is to spend all of this on capital reserves. Um, in our opinion, we've been underfunding these accounts for our generation, and, uh, sometimes we have to finance equipment and projects. Um, we add certain numbers on the last paving bond, and we paid almost $220,000 in interest. Take ten or twenty-year period, and that's a lot of taxpayer money for financial, you know? Um, so we wanted to, you know, we wanted to give you guys options, um, and hopefully you can look at these things.
Yes, sir?
Moderator?
Uh, Warren, that gentleman behind you go first, and then?
Now, Shane.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make an amendment to the, uh, motion as, as written, and accept the budget committee's version of the spending for the $750,000.
Okay, and that, and that amendment would be to, um, just to be clear, $200,000 for roads and sidewalks, $500,000 for a public safety building? I'm s, did I get that right? Two hundred thousand for roads and sidewalks, $500,000 for a public safety building, and $50,000 for the ball field. That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Okay, so we're going? Okay, so we're going to discuss the amendment first. We'll see how that goes and then we'll get back to the main motion. Yes. Uh, wait, I'm sorry. I think, um, you were next, Warren.
Yeah, well, the bonnie took care of it. I'd like to amend the Budget Committee and I agree with that proposal. I think those things will make the town a better place. And if we have the money, we gotta take this up to the mayor's view.
And he... yes, go ahead.
Just... just so you know on this too, um, fifty thousand for the ball field, um, Denise can speak to it. She's had a project for eleven years on this construction, um, with a lot of money put in. And so we wanted to give her some extra money to complete that project, or at least bring it to the next phase. Um, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, leveraging some town money could get, um, Greg potential grant money, I believe, for payment. Um, so about two hundred thousand taxpayer money would secure another... Hundred eighty thousand from the state, I believe. Uh, I mean, that's money... that money's going to go to some other town if it's not us. So, um, just to explain that, those numbers. So, yeah.
Um, DeVita?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Boni that we should vote some of the recommendation of the Budget Committee. And I don't have a problem with the roads and sidewalks. And... but I think some of this money should be used to reduce taxes, not just put it all into these reserves.
Okay, the amendment... the amendment is to accept the Budget Committee recommendation. And, um, is there someone in the back there that wants to speak to this? Is there... yes, uh, yes, sir.
The seven fifty is that comfortably the LD override? How does that affect the...
And Christine's going to speak to that right now.
Okay, so the Budget Committee recommendation does not include any funds to reduce the tax commitment. And this is in no way a rebuttal. It's just an answered question. Um, so without utilizing any of the undesigned fund balance to lower the tax commitment, this would also require the approval of Article forty-seven, which is to increase the property tax levy limit. And... So that is for educational purposes. That would require a property tax levy limit override. Um, and some know that, uh, by the term LD-one.
The only comment I wanted to make is that if you'll notice, under the Budget Committee's recommendation, it was five to four, which was a pretty even vote. And it will not cover any of your taxes or help the tax rate at all. You'll get all those things, but you won't benefit really.
Um, yes, sir. Here's the microphone. And then you, sir.
I'm, uh, I'm looking back at, uh, maybe the last ten years just with the fire station itself. When I'm looking at the proposal to save, it's about time we start looking at new building. Uh, we've been putting a lot of money into that building, and it continues to deteriorate. At some point, it's not going to be usable. And at that point, we will have an emergency on our hands. And we'll obviously end up going, oh, we're going to dump the trajectory at that point. So I think a little pre-planning in this case. And again, I'm just, I've been doing this here with you guys for twelve years. I know most members here are here much, much longer, not all their lives. But in those twelve years, we've been throwing money at that fire station every single year. I think sixty thousand this year with one of the other amendments or all of the other articles. And we have to keep doing that every single year. We're... we're not really saving a dime. Thank you.
Um, sorry, this gentleman over here, you're all set. Um, Linda?
You want to air it for me or you want my call? Um, I'm going to support... I'm going to support all of these, the amendment. I'm going to support that. But the one comment that I did want to make to Mr. Savage, and absolutely I know exactly how hard people have worked. This is... this is not a new game for me up here. But in the end, I would rather have a hundred people make a decision on how our tax money is going to be paid than just five. And that's all I want to say right there.
DeVita?
I just want to answer Mr. Boni. When you said sixty thousand dollars was being put into the fire station, fifty thousand was for an engineering study for a new building.
Yes, sir.
I just, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out if one seventy-three is the only one override, but if we pass that amendment, so if we give the seven fifty to taxation, does that change that? Or is the seven fifty only there?
There's...
No matter what?
There's no override, uh, for any amount, uh, of five hundred thousand dollars or more that's applied to taxation. So this amendment provides zero dollars to reduce the tax limit. And therefore, the body will have to vote for the LD-one override.
So if the course action that we're having right now there, we have to override, we have an LD override happen.
Right, and that will be Article forty-seven. That will be by secret ballot and requires a two-thirds vote.
But it also... but it also has to do with what we're doing here.
Yes.
The seven fifty is what I'm trying to figure out. If that votes taxation?
There's no overriding.
No overriding of that. Gets rid of Article forty-seven.
Right. Anything over five hundred thousand dollars gets rid of the override.
But with the amendment, there's going to be an override.
There would have to be a vote to override. Does that answer your question? Okay. Yes?
I, uh, was definitely for this. I think that it's your money. And what I was trying to push during the process of the budget building was, I think it's something valuable for us to be able to drive down the road and say, we have a good road to drive down. Because as you know, our infrastructure is starting to fail. And I think that, I agree with Mr. Boni, that we can put away money towards the public safety building and not have to borrow. I'd like to save for any day personally. And I think that, uh, giving you this option today is... is good discussion. And I agree with Linda too to make sure that there would be more people to serve and make that decision. It's not our decision. It's your decision.
Yes, sir.
Question. If we...
Uh, there's a microphone coming. If you could wait for it. Because we are recording this.
If we went with the selectmen's recommendation, um, would that change the requirement for Article forty-seven?
Um, yes. Because their recommendation is five hundred thousand dollars to reduce, uh, the tax commitment, and therefore there would be no overriding necessary.
And I'll make the amendment to the amendment.
No, no. No, I made that clear from the beginning. We're not amending amendments. We're going to do one amendment at a time. You can vote this amendment up or down. Um, but we're not going to try to keep track of amendments to amendment. It's, uh, way too complicated and it's unnecessary. So that's... that's my ruling. You can, uh, hold that against me. So right now, we have an amendment on the floor to, um, amend the original motion from the, um, original motion, which was to use all the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reduce the tax commitment. That motion has been amended to accept the Budget Committee's recommendation. That's what we're talking about now. And that's what we will vote on next if there is no more discussion. Does anybody else want to speak to the amendment? Okay. Yes?
I guess I'm one of the one hundred. I vote to. I... I had an idea when this came up, that Christine, our town manager, came up with an idea how to use a portion of this money to reduce taxes and then put some money away for roads, put some money away for the fire department and the new building, and still... still come under the override. So I don't know if that's clear to you folks. And I'm... but I wanted to make sure you understood.
So the amendment on the floor that we're going to vote on next is the Budget Committee recommendation, which is two hundred thousand dollars for roads and sidewalks, five hundred thousand dollars for a public safety building, and fifty thousand dollars for the ball field. Are there any other final questions or comments on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the amendment, are we going to have to take account? Um, do we have? Okay. Those who are in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand and keep your hand raised. So you did... you did, uh, this side and this age? Okay. And what's your... what's your total? Excuse me? Ten, okay? Twelve? And in the middle, sixteen? All right, thank you. So votes in favor are thirty-eight. Those opposed to the amendment, please raise your hand and keep it raised. What do you have, Jean? And, um... What did you have, Jean? And the middle?
Fourteen.
No, right, the twenty-one is... is the middle section, right? And ten is what you had, Jean? Okay? And fourteen? That's forty-five. Against thirty-eight in favor. The amendment is defeated. So now we're back to the main motion. The main motion is to apply seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reduction of taxes. And now the floor is open for questions or comments on the main motion. Yes?
I'd like to make an amendment to our motion
Okay.
to accept the selectmen's recommendation takes five hundred thousand dollars to reduce our taxes.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars for roads and sidewalks? Okay. So your vote... Okay, your motion is to accept the selectmen's recommendation. Is there a second? Okay. You got the motion as a second? All right, so now we have another amendment on the floor, and that is to accept the selectmen's recommendation. Would anybody like to speak to that? Yes, sir?
Are you allowed to... and I... I don't mention the name. Just a question. Are you allowed to go off script on this and make our, like, if so, we can give twenty-five to Denise? Sort of, for that's a...
Yes.
If this goes on?
Yes. But we're not going to amend an amendment?
I don't say anything.
Okay. All right, so we're now discussing the amendment, which is the selectmen's recommendation. Are there any questions or comments? Or anybody want to say anything about the recommendation by the selectmen? Which is, again, five hundred thousand dollars to reduce taxation, which by the way, does not require an override vote. Hundred and fifty thousand for roads and sidewalks, and a hundred thousand dollars for a public safety building. Does anybody have... yes, sir?
I can go without the mic. It's not big.
All right, if you could stand up, maybe that would help a little.
If we never override LD-one, we are never going to save the money necessary to do the things that we need to do. We just can't get there. And every year we'll get farther and farther away from what's old at the time to over-... I'm just... I'm just saying.
In the back? All the way in the back there? Yes, is... is that... is that you, Mr. Washburn?
I guess so.
Okay. Would you like to say something?
You hear me?
Go ahead.
All right. If we add in two hundred and fifty thousand to our budget, doesn't it make it a lot easier next year to pass... Don't... to pass the LD-one? Because it's then built into the budget for next year?
Is that a question you want answered?
Yes.
Okay. So if we have to add another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in appropriations, does that... how does that affect next year's budget? The question from Mr. Washburn was, does it make it somehow easier to avoid an override?
Yeah, because we've already built in another two hundred and fifty thousand to next year's budget. However we spend it, who knows? But, uh, but it'll be that much easier to... We won't need as much of a need to pass the LD-one override. Am I right on that or not?
So spending directly out of the undesigned surplus does not change the tax levy limit, however not utilizing as much surplus the lower taxation does. So in essence, spending the surplus does increase the levy limit, yes.
For next... for next year.
For next year. And I also wanted to clarify, um, Darla, you made a statement earlier. We've actually increased the capital reserve spending, which, uh, request by approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we've also already approved that increase in capital reserve spending this evening that was already approved. Um, and also, our budget is already up six hundred and six thousand dollars from last year's spending, which includes that two hundred and sixty thousand. So anything that you want to spend from surplus is in addition to that increase that we've already approved.
We're on the amendment, which is the selectmen's recommendation for the use of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of surplus. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
I just want to say, I've worked this town for about, you know, thirty-six years now. And we absolutely need a new talent for it. No question about it. My motion tonight was only meant, this is a step in the right direction. I think it gives us, um, it tells our fire team and our fire department stop looking, stop getting some clean figures to us. We're sure it's about replacing one of our buildings, but it also gives us some direction to follow. Instead of putting the happening nodes into an act where we don't really have good engineering yet, we don't really have good figures in fact. And I think we have an extremely competent chief that's going to give us all very clear picture next year. So that was my idea for our tactic tonight.
What's she doing, swatting you down there?
You will.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the amendment, which is the selectmen's recommendation, Darla?
One of the things that went into my thought on this was we're right in the middle of a rebuild, and we don't know exactly how that's going to affect us either. So as we were talking, it's all of them were thinking, this might be the way to ease into it. We have increased spending in the capital defenses, and I just think that we ought to wait and see what the rebuild is going to do and be cautiously move into this.
Yes, sir. The proposed public safety building would also include the police department, correct? Uh, is that the thing? It's left out quite a bit. Uh, I think we do need to address the turnover in our apartment, um, securing long-term appointment there. Hopefully this multi-use facility will... will help with that. As Darla mentioned, it's... It's a weird year with the rebuild coming in, not knowing those final figures. Uh, Christine did recommend increasing capital reserves, almost a quarter million dollars more than we have. Uh, a lot of stuff looking enough. Uh, and then we have some contract negotiations going on as well. So it's... there's a lot of things up in the air. Uh, so I hate to see us go too extreme either way, but I think having this debate's healthy and what we all like to see throughout the year, is that.
The, uh, selectmen's recommendation is on the floor as the amendment to a main mo... to the main motion. Does anybody else want to speak to the amendment? Does anybody else want to speak to the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. The main motion has now been amended. We now need to vote on the main motion. So the main motion will be to see if the town will vote to appropriate $750,000 as follows. $500,000 to reduce the tax commitment, $150,000 for roads and sidewalks, and $100,000 for a public safety building. So now the main motion is on the floor as amended. Does anybody want to speak to the main motion? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just have one question, Dr. Gray. Will we still be owing the full for some of that state money with $150,000?
Yes, we will. Any other questions or comments regarding the main motion? Yes, sir?
So just to be clear, all we technically need to get rid of LD1 is the 473. So we could actually, I'm not saying amend it, I'm just out of curiosity.
Well, you could, you could, you could make a motion to amend now if you wanted to.
But this is big. But just, we only need 473 to get rid of LD1. And so we could take that extra 25, because I don't know how important ball field is. I don't really have a clue on that until it gets now finally taken off. But that makes 25 to leave, and just curious, something like that. Any comment from anybody?
Well, that's not the motion that's on the floor. I guess everybody's in favor of baseball. Go ahead, Christine.
You're correct, Tom. If there was an amendment to include 25,000 for the ball field and reduce the amount to reduce the tax commitment by 25, that would, that would remove the necessity to do an override.
I hate to do this prolonged, I'm only amended to the, to take the 25 out of the taxation, the 500,000, and put 25 into the ball field.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there is a motion for 5, $475,000 would be towards taxation. $25,000 would be for a ball field, and... Where am I here?
150.
$150,000 for roads and sidewalks.
50.
And $100,000 for public safety. Is that your amendment? Okay, hopefully that's, that all adds up to $750,000. It does. Okay, so we have a motion to amend. It's been seconded. Does everybody understand what the amendment is about? Are there any questions or comments about the amendment? I'm sorry, does someone have their hand up? Okay, sorry, there was a post there, I couldn't see.
We, could we instead of appropriating the ballpark? I love kids, and I'm happy to have them play ball, but could we instead appropriate that for the public safety building?
Well, there's a, there's an amendment on the floor. We cannot, we're not going to amend an amendment. Okay, so the amendment is 475 for taxes, 25,000 for a ball field, $150,000 for roads and sidewalks, and $100,000 for a public safety building. If people feel strongly about some other alternative, you can vote the amendment down. But right now, questions and comments should be directed towards the amendment. So ma'am, to answer your question, if this amendment is voted down, you're certainly welcome to make another amendment if you wish, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Where is the ball field?
Where is the ball field? Denise, do you want to respond?
Just to give everybody an update, this complex has been, the town people have invested in this since 2006. This is a permit to expand, it's not just a ball field. This is expanding our parking at the community center. We had a DOT study done, and our traffic study, and we have that permit in place right now. So this next phase, this is 12 years, that is about 300-some thousand dollars that the town has invested in this since 2006. We're at the point now that we can't expand on our complex. Our parking lot is our next phase of the community center, whereas we don't have enough parking. What this money will do, will make our permit viable, so that we can move forward, so we don't lose all these years of investment that we have, and to continue to grow our community to where we need to. This, this will move Route 2, this is a requirement by the state, this is what we need to do. This money will help do a left lane turning into the community center before we can even do anything else. So it's not just a ball field, it's, it's adult softball, bringing it back. It's soccer fields, we do not have a soccer field, we're using the outfield to baseball fields. Our parking lot is our biggest issue, and this is where this money is going to go to Route 2, so we can expand our parking at the community center.
So do girls get to play on baseball?
Absolutely, the multi-use fields, you know, baseball, all multi, yes.
As to the amendment, are there any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
I just want to address some of the concerns for both public safety building. And while as much as it's appreciated, and I think nobody values that, at some point we need a building like this to replace both the fire and police departments. Unless you're wanting to make an amendment for about 3.5, 4.5 million dollars tonight, we're not building one anytime soon. And we do have to get there, and we have to find a way to get there.
Sean, you need a mic.
Good, I'm sorry. You guys? I, I just want to relieve some of the concerns that unless, you know, we're spending 3.5, 4.5 million dollars tonight, we're not building a public safety building. We do need to do it at some point, and we need to find a way to get there. I'm, you know, not exactly sure how we will find it, and figure that out as a community. And I appreciate the sentiments of, you know, adding 25,000, but that doesn't make a difference, though. Denise, this project, that direct center is ready, the engineers done. And, you know, they, they've been making progress, and they need that to finalize those next steps. I think that this amendment is the right thing to do. This is the right direction. I'm not a taxpayer in this community, but when I'm a taxpayer in another community, and I get it. You know, we have to find a way to do this together, and keep taxes low. And we can, we can spend on infrastructure, but we can, we can do it slowly, and we can get there. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the amendment? Let me repeat what the amendment is. It's $475,000 to reduce taxation, $25,000 for fields, ballpark, $150,000 for roads and sidewalks, and $100,000 for a public safety building. Any more questions or comments? Yes, Sabita?
$25,000, does she have enough money in her reserve account already to do the road?
No. No, she doesn't.
Currently, currently right now, it's about $40,000 in my ball field complex CIP account, with the additional 35 that you approved already, giving us 75. The original DEP application in, in 2006 stated at that time, the Route 2 project would be about $65,000 to $70,000. So I'm thinking it's definitely going to be more than that. Here we are, 11 years later. So, you know, given the 75 right now, we're, we're right on that original DEP margin 2006. So we all know the, you know, inflation has definitely gone up. So that, whatever's left in there will be utilized, I mean, for the following. This is a $1.1 million project. When was said and done, still moving forward. So this will just keep you, the permit viable, moving forward. So yes, this would definitely help.
As to the amendment, are there any other questions or comments? Alright, we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the amendment carries. The main motion has now been amended. I won't repeat what the main motion is unless someone asks me to, because you just voted to approve the amendment. So we have to follow these archaic technical procedures. So we now have an amended motion. Any questions or comments finally on the amended motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. And we will take no action on Article 47. We don't need to vote on that. Article 48, to see if the town will vote to fund the general assistance over expenditure for fiscal year 2017 with the general assistance state reimbursement. Move as written? Moved and seconded to approve Article 48 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 49, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend on behalf of the town grant funds from state governing agencies, federal governing agencies, or private organizations for any purpose they deem to be in the best interest of the town. Second? Second. Moved and seconded to approve Article 49 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 50, to see if the town, as a legislative body, will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen approving, applying for, and accepting all community development block grants, including the following. Economic Development Program, Development Program in the amount of $120,000, and the Micro Enterprise Assistant Grant facade in the amount of $150,000. And to make such assurances, assume such responsibilities, and exercise such authority as are necessary and reasonable to implement such programs, with the understanding that should the intended national objective of the CDPG program not be met, all CDPG funds must be repaid to the state of Maine CDPG program. Moved and seconded to approve Article 50 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 51, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all of the money received from the state for snowmobile registrations to the Skalten Snowwalk Snowmobile Club for the maintenance of their system or network of snowmobile trails, under condition that those trails be open in snow season to the public for outdoor recreation purposes at no charge, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter an agreement with the club under such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may deem advisable for that purpose. So, Mr. Gray? Second? Moved and seconded to approve Article 51 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 52, to see if the town will vote to apply as much of the yearly overlay as may be necessary to fund property tax abatements and applicable interest granted during fiscal year 2018. Move as written? Moved and seconded to approve Article 52 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 51, to see if the town will vote to, 53, I'm sorry. To see if the town will vote to establish September 15, 2017, or 30 days after the minimum date of taxes, whichever comes later, as the date when the first installment of taxes shall be due and payable, and March 15, 2018, as the date when the in-second installment of taxes shall be due and payable. And to see if the town will fix the rate of 7% interest to be charged on all taxes unpaid after said dates. Second? Moved as written? Thank you. And moved and seconded to accept Article 53 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 53 as written, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 54, to see if the town will vote pursuant to 36 MRA Section 506-A to fix the rate of 3% interest to be paid on overpaid or abating taxes. Move as written? Moved and seconded to approve Article 54 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 55, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of, by the most prudent means possible, any equipment, vehicles, furniture, or other non-real estate town property that is no longer necessary to town operations. Thank you. Second? Moved and seconded to approve Article 55 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 56, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes due thereon, on such terms as they deem advisable, and to issue quitclaim needs for such property. And? Second? And second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 57, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to release a reversionary clause encumbering the current Skills Inc. property at 5 Greenwood Avenue, map 33, lot 103, in exchange for the town receiving 20% of the sale price when Skills Inc. conveys the property to a for-profit individual or entity. Move? Second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 57 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 58, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer an amount not to exceed 1% of the total town budget between budget categories, as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occur during fiscal year 2018. Thank you. And second? Who seconded that?
Me.
Christopher.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve Article 58 as written. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. Article 59, to see if the town will vote pursuant to 36 MRA Section 506 to authorize the tax collector and treasurer to accept prepayment of taxes not yet committed. Moved and seconded to approve Article 59 as written. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. I just want to make a brief comment as we move into some of the ordinances here. Ordinances cannot be amended. You can only vote them up or down. Article 60, to see if the town will vote to adopt the property maintenance ordinance.
Moderator?
Yep.
I hope we accept Article 60, moderator.
Okay. So moved and seconded to accept Article 60 as written. Yes, sir? Yes, do you have a mic for that gentleman?
I read the, the ordinance. I'm hopeful that I agree with it. If there's no power, or any power of looks in the town to take care of these four items, ordinance addresses, then fine, you shouldn't have.
Please speak, please put the microphone closer to your mouth.
Sorry, wait, my hands are on it.
Okay.
I have problems with some of the items addressed in the draft, or asked to approve tonight. One, that I, that I don't agree with, is someone, if someone is uncomfortable with the way my grass looks, or the way my landscaping looks, they have a right to ask the, quote-unquote, officers to come cut my grass and move my plants. If I don't do it, I can be fine. I think that's a good way to, to grant that right to everybody, to everyone of my neighbors. Put Steve in the position... Put them in a position, they can just about take care of it when they wish. They can abuse me, they can, they can break the nice relationship that we have right now. I'm not saying my house was bad, I'm just saying they have the right to do that, and I don't think they should be having that right because it makes them feel uncomfortable. I feel uncomfortable about a lot of this. How much money we spent tonight. But by the same token, I don't, I don't have any right to stop. You guys, under this, under this amendment, under this, uh, ordinance, will we have the right to do that? For all the enforcement officers saying, hey, the board, uh, new landscape procedures are doing very well, we'd like to have that stopped. Any answer?
All right, thank you, sir. As, somebody, you have more?
I'm not done, I got one more. Okay. The Constitution states that the amendment is against excessive fines, and they shouldn't be imposed. That's the amendment of the Constitution. I, when I'm trying to make here, right now, we, you know, past this thing, we can make the fines go up to, from zero right up to two hundred and fifty thousand and above because it's unlimited, we can find an unlimited amount. Two thousand five hundred per day is a pretty good fine. And if you rapidly get to a point where you can't afford it, too much, I understand, but I did this excessive. The last one. While many, while many of the decisions of the code enforcement officer are to be challenged with appeals, some of them can, he has to express his permission to, he has his discretion to allow, that's it. I think that every one of the, the decisions I made should be also appealable to the Board of Selectmen. Some of them are, some are, for example, the extension, how long they can get an extension for is not appealing. I think we should take a look at this again, and bring it back next, next town meeting, and see if we can get some more feedback, and look at it closer. I, I'd like to recommend that we pay with, make a motion, and pay with, uh, article and this ordinance, until so far as it could be further extended.
I'm back when I can send to your motion. There's a motion on the floor, and it's going to be voted up or down. Thank you for your comments. Yes.
All I hear behind this, and I'll tell you, I, I'm the one that kind of pushed this, um, and really the whole idea behind it was not to micromanage on what you do with your property, um, it was more for, and my reason behind it was, um, that we're getting these properties that, that are empty, um, these banks or financial institutions have control of them, and aren't taking care of them, not while the grass is real high, and if your property owners, and we've all seen these properties, um, and you keep your property looking nice, your place looking nice, um, there's really nothing that we can do, um, you know, Randy had no bite, um, to make these people at least cut down one, um, so we had asked the, you know, we went to the planning board, we asked the planning board to, um, come up with an ordinance of some sort, um, to try to give us a little bit of bite so we can at least clean up these properties, um, and they did that, um, I, I, I think it's very, I think it's very good, um, again, it's not to micromanage, Randy's not, certainly isn't going to go around and think that Juan is free interest, it should be two, certainly, he's got better things to be doing than worrying about that, so, um, that's the intent behind this, um, and I think, you know, everybody that's seen those properties, I mean, I, you know, I have gotten complaints from certain properties, um, and so that's really.
Yes.
Uh, John Greenwood from the planning office, um, there's absolutely nothing in this ordinance that requires any kind of, uh, regulations about grass, or how tall your grass is. It's all a lot to do with nuisance conditions and waste and stuff that people do out, so there's actually nothing in there about maintaining yards, any level of grass, in fact, nothing vegetation is mentioned at all, so, to, that's the first point. It, it wasn't, as the gentleman on the stage said, just about giving the code enforcement officer, um, a bit more authority to deal with things as he's expected, so I just wanted to make a point on that. Thank you.
Randy, you want to say something? Do you have a microphone?
I do. Yes, sir. So, in my office, um, I probably receive one or two complaints a week or more about something on someone's property, a spot of trash, metal, garbage, take a ride around town. We're, we're, we're just taking huge steps backwards, and what we do is we use what we have right now, these are, oh, by the way, these are, there's no new law here, miscellaneous nuisance law, Title thirty-eight, Title seventeen's been around for a long time, so there's, what we've done is taken everything, relaxed it a little bit, the miscellaneous nuisance laws are matched up with the automobile graveyard junkyard law, and, um, gave me some key, so when you folks complain about fifteen bags of trash, and I end up in Kent's, um, office trying to enforce that under the automobile graveyard junkyard law, this is damn nighting, to be my frank, as a fact. So, anyone that's worked at this town knows that we all answer to the slumming, and hey my word, no slumming is going to allow us to go out and start looking at people's lawns and make sure their shrubs are on, or their lawns wrong. What, what this ordinance is meant to do is give you folks some protection, which you've been treatment me for years to give, so, please vote this ordinance, anybody.
Any other question? Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, this question is actually from Mr. Greenwood. Uh, Joel, one of the, one of the, uh, one of the problems the gentleman had with the ordinance was that felt that, that it didn't have enough time to review, and I just wanted you to confirm that the planning board had this for quite a while, and actually moved it back to the board, even had public hearings on this, is that correct?
I think this question was the extent of the process that was used to put this ordinance before the legislative body in terms of public hearings and meetings. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we were requested by the Select Board to draft an ordinance in this regard, we, uh, I drafted something which the planning boards discussed at their meeting, it was an open public meeting. We haven't had an official public hearing for this, um, this is the purpose of it going to the meeting today, so, there was a public meeting where it was discussed, that, the public meeting in the sense of it was the open planning board meeting.
Actually, there was a public hearing that was held at a Board of Selectmen's meeting on this ordinance. At that time, Randy spoke to the ordinance and, um, stated all the things that he stated this evening and more.
Any other questions or comments regarding the motion to accept Article sixty as written? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. I just want to say briefly that Article sixty-one and sixty-two are somewhat related. Um, if you approve, uh, the ordinance, uh, listed in Article sixty-one, then it will not be necessary to vote on Article sixty-two. Likewise, if you turn down Article sixty-one, then we will take up Article sixty-two. So Article sixty-one, to see if the town will vote to adopt the ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Moderator, excuse me, I move that we make favorable, uh, as written.
Okay, thank you. And second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Article sixty-one as written, which is in effect to adopt the ordinance. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, over there.
I, I think you know people understand this, but if we sell marijuana...
Can you, we can't hear you. Please take the microphone.
We are going to get tax money for this. It will help progress roads, it will help everything, and we voted for this. The state voted for marijuana, and it stays, and I don't understand why we can't have it in this town, and that's all I'm saying. It's not like, but I think it would be a detriment to this town not to have it here because it would give us tax money to pay for our schools, our roads, or everything else.
Okay. Just so you, I'm sure you understand this, but just to be clear, this does not prohibit, uh, the recreational use of marijuana, it's just prohibiting retail sales and marijuana social clubs within the town. Who else?
This reminds me a whole lot of fireworks discussion a couple of years ago. We voted to allow us all to listen to the fireworks, day and night, but we denied the building of this town to collect taxes on the businesses that were selling those fireworks. Those businesses exist, and they're very close to us. Marijuana sales businesses exist already in some cases, for instance, downtown Narvik. They're close to us. Now, Narvik is taxed in half of the old Crowell premises as commercial property because it's a grow operation and a sales operation. If we ban it from our town, we don't have the ability to control how it's going to be put forward because it's going to be in another town where they're going to set their own rules, and we're going to fail to get the money that we would get from commercial property. It's so short sighted, I can't believe that the process is coming forward. Do I smoke marijuana? Not anymore. Maybe you should jump. I don't know, I mean, it's not happening, our thirty-two minute discussion, you know, the choices of, well, how to spend excess money, maybe we do need it, all of us, or maybe we're already all smoking and don't know it. But I fairly admit, I smoked when I was in college and in high school.
But you didn't inhale, eh?
I fully inhale. There was no sense in doing it if I didn't inhale, Jesus. But that isn't the point of this right now. As was mentioned before, while some of the county voted no on marijuana legalization, probably because a lot of some of the counties already busy in the illegal production of marijuana, it being the number one cash crop in some of the counties. Nonetheless, it's already been passed as a state law. The, the whole festering of not allowing the town of Skowhegan to gain the tax dollars from commercial property just leaves me wondering what we're doing.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Is this, is this the gate town, or just the whole town of Skowhegan?
It's the whole town of Skowhegan. North, south, east, west, all the way in the back. Yes. Richard, do you give that person a microphone?
I don't speak much, and I don't know how to say this very well, but the fact that you want the money from marijuana really isn't the point. Marijuana is a drug, and the state, yes, has voted to approve it, but to allow the lure of it in order to get the taxes from it seems to me to be, I don't know, inappropriate. I heard a man, a wise man once say, several years ago, that the drug problem was so bad that the government was just going to say, okay, let's tolerate it and tax it, it's a big moneymaker. Well, marijuana is the entry point for a lot of people to harbor drugs, so are we going to allow tax, include marijuana in our, in our town, um, taxation or whatever, and, um, then the next, then, then when we decide that maybe heroin's okay, and, and all the, and all the other drugs are okay, then we're going to do that too, and so it's just going to go on and on? Obviously, I'm not very able to live with this, but that's my thought about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Richard, right down here.
I'm just not curious, how's the police chief feel about this?
Code enforcement law ordinance is...
Can you use a microphone, please?
I will enforce the laws and ordinances.
We can't hear you.
I will enforce the laws and ordinances of this state, adopted by the town, state legislature, or I do have personal opinions on marijuana, and I think you'll be surprised, but I do not wish to relate those at this time. If I have a personal conversation with me, I'll do that, but, um, not in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Basically, the reason behind that we were brought forward, um, yes, it was a state vote, um, and yes, it did pass, but as far as the town of Skowhegan voters, it did not pass. Um, so we were just basically going by the will of the town of Skowhegan residents because it did not pass by fifty-three percent, so, here we are, that's...
Thank you. All right, someone else? Uh, yes, sir.
Sir, just briefly on what you just commented on, I believe that the board is, uh, completely misinterpreting that vote.
Can you, you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, I just think that the board is, uh, misinterpreting that vote slightly because that vote also included some other things that a lot of small farmers, uh, did not help with, and it's very short sighted, uh, to believe that, uh, we don't want this in the town just because of that vote. It's not a practical application of it.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to, yes, sir?
Okay, I'm not asking the police chief's opinion, I'm just going to ask, will it make your department job hard if it does, if this does not pass? We have a store, is it going to make your job get more difficult?
We would, we would, uh, the selling of these products, uh, these clubs and stuff. Yes, it would, it would be more for us.
Can you speak up, chief, please?
Uh, it would, I, I perceive that it would make our job not harder, we just, we'd have a lot more to do, uh, to do spot checks on these, uh, businesses or, um, but no more so than any other business that actually opened up, so, good, bad, or indifferent, um, we have plenty to do with this town. Is this going to affect us in any major way?
Yes, back there, ma'am. Uh, Richard?
This is for the, uh, police chief also. Um, how are we going to determine whether people living in these, um, places where they can consume the public places, uh, you know, sort of a pot bar? How are we going to determine whether these people are under the influence to be illegal? And it really isn't really tested at this point.
There is a lot of science going on right now to try to come up with a way to measure impairment in a chemical sense for impairment. Impairment is impairment. We have tests that we can do to see if somebody is impaired, impaired by what. We also have tests that can determine what type of drug it's, uh... We also have tests that can determine what type of drug is affecting the individual. The, for an OUI that we suspect involves marijuana, it's very difficult to get the specific measurement that would be deemed obvious intoxication or impairment. So that science is coming, but it's not there yet. I don't know if I answered your question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay, all the way in the back, I'm sorry, Richard, can you...
Okay, as far as the marijuana, that's, okay, recreational, this town serves alcohol all the place. We're noticeable of bars, so what's the big difference? Really? And not only that, I think on the panel up here, how many of you voted against it? How many of you are against it? Are your people in town, your taxpayers, obviously most of the police department probably is because it's a burden on them. You asked our or I asked yours?
Well, it does mention here that the selectmen recommend passage of this article.
Yes.
Do many of the selectmen want to speak to their personal positions on this ordinance?
Go ahead.
Don't mind. I think that because we don't know what this is going to do yet, the state voted again, I already know someone's going to go wrong, actually. That's fine with me, but I don't think that I want to stand behind and support. I would rather wait and see how this is going to end up because you don't know how much burden it's going to be for the police department, not really. And you don't know how you're going to decide who's impaired and who isn't. So I'm one of the wait and see people. I don't think we should have people, stores opening up all, but just on, maybe we'll make some money for taxes and take a chance on getting it wrong.
Well, in response to what Darla said, I just want you to understand that Article 62, which is not before you get, if you vote down Article 61, that should impose a moratorium of one hundred and eighty days on retail sales and social clubs. So just make sure that you know that there's another option out there. So now we're on Article 61. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs. I don't see any other hands raised, so we will vote. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Richard?
I'm concerned about it as in if a store decides to open up downtown?
Speak up, please.
If a store decides to open up downtown and all businesses downtown already, if people want to go and shop downtown in a marijuana business, this opens up downtown and people smoke marijuana outside of that business, then people are going to have to walk through the smoke and it may deter people from shopping if a store moves into downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Union?
The location of any businesses under Article 62, those ordinances will be passed separately. And I do agree, alcohol and tobacco are drugs, yet we allow their sale throughout this town. And the police do have the sobriety tests, but they use, trust me, they use them all the time on people who are high on marijuana or other drugs. They don't necessarily have a measurement for how many nanograms they can consume, but they know when they're impaired because they failed the sobriety test.
Anybody else? Yes, Richard?
My only comment is that with around eight thousand voters in this town, you've got just a few people here deciding this.
Okay. Well, yes, sir.
I just wanted to question the inclusion of the word retail. It alludes to a wholesale side. Is retail in there for a specific reason? The retail club decision off?
I don't think, I don't think the state, I don't think the state law has passed providing for wholesale sales, only retail sales.
So wholesale could be different.
Is it on now? Yes. I just wanted to say that in the state legislature, there is a marijuana committee that's meeting now and will be meeting through the next several months. And there will be perhaps rules and regulations that we don't even know about yet.
Just to answer your question, sir, this ordinance does say that no person or organization shall develop or operate a business that engages in retail or wholesale sales of a retail marijuana product. Anybody else?
Over here.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. It's a little concerned that there is this language that somehow access is equivalent to advocacy. I don't think that the fact that there are stores in town that sell alcohol means that we advocate for alcohol use. I don't think the same for tobacco, and I don't think that marijuana would be any different. Having the option available for people who already use it or have an interest in using it allows it...
I think you shut off your mic.
It allows us to expand our tax base with actions that these people are already taking part in. I am not a smoker. I am never smoke. I'm not going to start just because a store opens up downtown, but at the same time, I know people who have never drank and have no interest in it. I don't think the fact that something is available means that the town is advocating for its use or that somehow some epidemic is going to ensue where people who never had interest in this are going to suddenly develop this instinctual need to be part of it.
Thank you. Anybody who has not spoken yet, want to say something? All right, and then we'll go back to this lady in the back. Right, did you have your hand up? Yes.
Availability does make more people get something in anything. The more available something is, the more people will do it.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir. If you read that, Richard over there to your right.
Just want to say real quick, there's going to be a school downtown. State law is already not going to allow something in the town, but within a thousand feet of school, so there you go. It's not going to be downtown.
Anybody else? All right, I think we're, anybody up here who's saying anything? How, one more?
I'm just wondering, there we go. I'm just wondering, we always say that it add to our tax base. Well, I'm sure that was said when alcohol sales came up and cigarette sales. I wonder if anyone has any data on how much we gained with the alcohol and cigarettes versus how much we lose in traffic accidents and lung cancer, et cetera, et cetera.
But they're still not banned.
What's that?
I don't think, speaking for the selectmen, I don't think they have that information in writing to finger this. But I think your point is well made. Mr. Shea?
Mr. Union, any questions?
Okay, there's no debate. All those in favor of moving the question and in debate, raise your hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. We will now vote on Article 61, which if you vote in the affirmative, if you vote yes, you are agreeing to adopt an ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs. All those in favor of that ordinance, raise your hand. All those opposed? Well, I guess we're going to have to count, so we get our counters out there. All those in favor of the prohibition in Article 61, raise your hand. And please keep it up. Nineteen? Thank you. And in the middle?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
And on the left?
Ten.
Ten. So we have forty-four in favor. And those of you who oppose the ordinance prohibiting, please raise your hand and keep your hand up. In the middle?
Forty.
And Jean?
Fourteen.
It passes forty-four to forty-three. I'm sorry, was there... So we do not need to vote on Article 62, which is a moratorium. We will proceed to Article 63, to see if the town will vote to enter into the interlocal agreement with the town of Kanan regarding Lake George Regional Park. Any questions or comments about the Article 63? All those in favor, please raise your, oh, I'm sorry.
This is the exact same agreement that was put in place originally, so it would operate the same way that it does now with the Lake George Corporation that is half Skowhegan, half Kanan board. I hope that answers your question.
Did you say something along the lines of, you're just looking off of upkeep and all?
Mr. Union?
Yes, Mr. Shea?
That agreement was written twenty years ago. It doesn't apply to either town to raise or spend any money. And in fact, Kanan has raised and spent money to send to Skowhegan. Skowhegan has something in many non-monetary ways, but it hasn't been reported. But neither town has reported.
So there is no financial obligation, which is...
They go if they're interested in that.
Right.
So the state's still paying for it, basically?
Yes, Warren?
The state has a lot of land and the land makes future programs. The state does not pay. Users pay, and people give money to the park. That's how it works.
So there are donations and user fees. Anything else, sir, about that?
So the people that are working, I mean, I guess they didn't know, sorry. The people that are working there are being paid from all the donations made from them.
And user fees.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, thank you for asking. Any other questions or comments about Article 63 as written? Yes.
I just want to add, there's a small monetary amount that we pay for water safety program in Denise's budget, small, but I do want that to not be disclosed.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 63 as written, raise your hand. All those opposed, the article carries. There being no other business other than Article 2, which will be taken up tomorrow, I need a motion that we adjourn the tapeworm. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, are being adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.